Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I am calling the July 24th City Council meeting to order. The July meetings were rescheduled this month, and they are a week later than normal due to the Fourth of July holiday earlier this month. As a reminder, we still continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, and so both staff members and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic and the wish of stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kind of a fun night and a kind of a full room. We have a lot of special business this evening, and the first item under that category tonight is ID 1400. It is the recognition of Hall of Fame recipient Ken Konixmark, who was inducted in 2023. Ken, I wonder if you want to come over and join me at the lectern? And I didn't have to surprise you this time.
No, you didn't.
Yeah. We had a very fun ceremony where Ken thought he was coming to celebrate somebody else, but he ended up being our recipient this year, and we're very, very proud of him. Our Hall of Fame Award is the community's top honor, and it is bestowed on individuals who exemplify service, leadership, and civic mindedness. It is with great pleasure that I can invite this year's Hall of Fame Award winner to join me, Ken Konixmark. Ken is best known for his work protecting the natural environment and being a key contributor to two development agreements in Issaquah, one for the Talis neighborhood and the other for Highlands, and they now shape the way we think about Issaquah. His civic-minded energy, creativity, and leadership were critical to the acquisition and preservation of thousands of acres of open space in Issaquah. His dedication to local land conservation, recreation, and land use have been integral to countless significant preservation efforts. He joins an illustrious group of Hall of Fame inductees, some of whom are here tonight. Could you raise your hand if you're already in the Issaquah Hall of Fame? I want to thank all of you who've come tonight in support of these Hall of Famers, just to let you know how much I appreciate it that you are acknowledging their tremendous efforts. This isn't kind of a one-and-done or one project, and you're in the Hall of Fame. These are people who have given decades of service to this community. They have shaped us and make us look the way we do today. We're a beautiful wilderness. We have wonderful trees around us. We have a fabulous lake, stream, salmon, you name it, and it's because of the people who are in the Hall of Fame. So, thank you all very much. I'm going to see if Ken, who is very shy, would like to share a few words.
You don't have any other agenda items, right? I can go on all night.
No, you have the whole night.
No, thank you first. It's a huge honor, and I'm honored especially to join all of the rest of you in the Hall of Fame. All these glowing comments kind of make up for the threats and insults you collect over decades when you fight battles in the civic arena. And, you know, if this is so fun, we could do this every week, can't we?
We could do it every week if you want to.
I don't get comments like this too often. So, thank you very much. It's an honor to be in the Hall of Fame. Issaquah is a really special, wonderful, unique place, and we're blessed with elected officials who care about it deeply, who do really good work, and who have courage to make tough decisions. As Mary Lou and I talked today, an example being no on the southeast bypass that would have cut Issaquah off from Tiger Mountain. Things like that took courage and guts to do the right thing, and we're lucky we have people that do that. Well, thank you all.
And Ken, will you do a little picture here? Thomas?
That would be funny if we did.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
My little... I will stay down here for a little longer and do a few more special presentations. The next one is ID 1466. It's the acknowledgement of the LEED for Cities certification that the city received today, and I'd like to invite Hillary Varnador to the lectern to join me. Hillary, are you here? There she is. Thanks, hi.
Hello, guys.
A few little words, and then it's going to be you. So, this evening, we are honored to be recognized by U.S. Green, the United States Green Building Council for our city's decades-long commitment to sustainability and providing a high quality of life. We chose to apply for the LEED for Cities program because it was an opportunity for us to assess ourselves using a global rating system and compare ourselves to other communities across the country and the world. It was a chance for us to learn from other communities and dig deep on how we apply an equity lens to all of our city's work. It also was a chance for us to identify gaps and areas for improvement. Staff have already developed a few pages of action items for areas where we can improve. We will continue working across all of our city departments and with our community partners and with our residents to make Issaquah an even better and more sustainable place to live. I'll hand the microphone over to Hillary now. She is the Vice President for Cities at the U.S. Green Building Council, and she's going to speak about the program and the certification process. Hillary.
Thank you so much, Mayor Paulie, Council. Thank you for having me here. It's been a pleasure to come up from Tucson, Arizona, which is where I live, to really experience your city, particularly on the heat wave that we're having in the southwest. The U.S. Green Building Council, we're based in Washington, D.C. I'm actually from that area, but recently transplanted to Tucson with my family, and it's really been a blessing because it's given me access to all the cities, towns, and counties on the west side of our country. And I've been based in Maryland since I graduated graduate school in 2000, so I've been there a long time, and it's really been nice to be in the west and have the opportunity to come much easier to other places, right? So, we had a great luncheon earlier today where we were able to talk about all of the benefits of the program and all of the strengths of the city of Issaquah, but just to let folks in the room know a little bit about the program, and I'll be quick. So, you may have heard of the LEED rating system before. If you've maybe gone into a hotel or a convention center or a school with the LEED emblem on the door, that is a very common program globally. Many, many hundreds of thousands of buildings are certified to LEED. LEED for Cities was created to certify the entire jurisdiction, so all the way out to either the city boundary or the county boundary, whichever you are certifying at the time. And we're really looking not just at municipal operations, but all of the things that are happening within your city, within your jurisdiction. So, this rating system is focused on the social, economic, and environmental aspects of sustainability. So, we make a joke that really everything's in there, except maybe sports and God, everything that's happening. So, if you're a stakeholder in the room tonight, whether you're a student, or you work with the chamber, or you're involved in the hospital, or the education program, those things are all in the rating system. And so, by Issaquah really stepping up to the plate and saying, "We want to baseline where we are. We want to evaluate where our strengths, our weaknesses, and our gaps are," that is leadership in itself, just stepping up and saying, "We want to understand how we're doing so that we can only get better," right? So, I really applaud the city for taking the... It's a nervous step sometimes, right, to like look within and understand how you're doing across all of these areas, but you did really well, and we're so excited to be able to work with you in the future to kind of take the next steps, right, to implement, prioritize, and investment, things that we've learned through this process. So, on behalf of the U.S. Green Building Council, I'm so excited to tell you all that you're LEED Gold City, the only one in the entire state of Washington, so that's awesome.
Awesome.
Yes. And we're here along the way with you to take those next steps forward, so congratulations.
Thank you, Hillary. Do we, Thomas, have the plaque here? Oh, we do. It's super heavy, by the way. hello. She's got the heavy plaque. She is the manager of our sustainability team, and for a city of our size, to go through that certification process is a really big deal. Stacy is just an amazing person on our team, and thank you, Stacy, and your team for all the work that you did today. So, for the next two items, I'm going to invite Stephanie Angula, Angula, to come up. Stephanie is the Chair of our Sister Cities Commission, and she's going to help me with these next two special business items. First, we have a proclamation today on Friendship Day, and I will read that before presenting it to Stephanie. The International Day of Friendship, also known as World Friendship Day, was proclaimed in 2011 by the U.N. General Assembly with the idea that friendship between peoples, countries, cultures, and individuals can inspire peace efforts and build bridges between communities. Whereas the city of Issaquah values its international friendships and its formal sister cities with Sundal Norway, established in 1991, and Shifshao in Morocco, established in 2006. And whereas the City of Issaquah Sister Cities Commission is in place to help foster the sisterhood relationships, and the commission works to increase the knowledge, goodwill, and understanding of the world through people-to-people diplomacy, education, and cultural exchange. And whereas the city of Issaquah has a long tradition of promoting diversity, equality, fairness, and friendship, and whereas Issaquah is strengthened by the strong role friendship plays in building trust, promoting peace, and bringing people of different cultures together, now therefore I, Mary Lou Pauli, the mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim July 30th to be Friendship Day in the city of Issaquah, and I invite the community to join me in celebrating and fostering friendships, both locally and globally. Thank you. Do you want to talk a little bit about the commission?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for this proclamation and for allowing us to accept it. I would like to recognize some of our local commission, or yes, Sister Cities Commission members that we have. We have Sherri Gurke in the audience, and we also have Wendy Pickering and some other former member, familiar faces here. We just want to say thank you. We're excited to continue the work that we're doing in fostering the friendships with our sister cities. Thank you.
Hang up with me now. In that same vein, the next item is ID 1473, and this is recognition of local students through the Sister Cities Young Artists and Authors Showcase, BYAS for short. And Stephanie, would you like to bring up and introduce our artists?
So, really quickly, I would just like to say that this is our second year that we have done a call for local artists, youth artists, authors, and composers, that's a part of it as well, ages 13 to 18. So, this year, we have five students that we're recognizing locally that have also been passed on to the international competition with Sister Cities International, based in Washington, D.C. So, we're rooting for them, and we will find out the results of that international competition in mid-August, so we will keep the council and everyone else informed. First tonight, I would like to call up Adwita Satapati. Adwita is 13, and she submitted original music that she composed herself under the title Beacon. So, congratulations. Okay, so the next student that we'd like to recognize tonight is Cora Chase. Come on up, Cora. Cora is also 13, and she submitted digital art for our local competition that has been passed on to our international competition under the title Perspectives. I'd like to now bring up Felicia Tiong. Felicia is 14, and she submitted classical art under the title Fighting with Action. We have two other students that could not be with us tonight, but I'd like to take a moment to recognize them as well. Angelina Pimkina, she's 17, and she submitted original music under the title Food for Thought. So, congratulations to her. We also have Anya Pimkina, age 14, who also submitted original music under the title Food Shortage During the Pandemic. So, congratulations to her. And we are in touch with them, and we will make sure that their certificates are passed along to them. Also, I thought it might be a good idea to note that this year's competition was about food and food sustainability in communities. So, each of these students and the two students that I mentioned were very brave, I want to use that word brave, and to go for it and submit work. We're so proud of you, and thank you for engaging the competition and putting your ideas and your emotions and your thought out there in an artistic way. Really beautiful, and we're proud of you.
Thank you, Stephanie, and thank you. That is fantastic and very exciting and encouraging. Council, we had a request to get that beautiful piece of art in a picture, and so if you'd like to come down and join us, we'll have our commissioners, we'll have our artists. Let's do another picture in front. ID 1379, the National Night Out proclamation, and I'd like to invite Chief of Police Paula Schwann to the lectern, and anyone else you brought with you, Paula, bring them all up. Hi, Chief. You got something. Oh, yeah, go ahead and do that. Thank you, Chief. Whereas the National Night Out is a community-building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships annually on the first Tuesday of August, and whereas the 40th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Issaquah to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community drug and crime prevention efforts. And whereas the city of Issaquah and the Issaquah Police Department play a vital role in crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Issaquah and are supporting the National Night Out 2023 locally, and whereas it is essential that the city of Issaquah community be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Issaquah. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program, now therefore I, Mary Lou Pauli, mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim August 1st, 2023, to be National Night Out in the city of Issaquah, and I invite community to join me in celebrating and participating in festivities that raise awareness of the importance of this cause. And I'm going to have our chief share a few words. Paula.
Thank you, Councilmember and Mayor. This year's National Night Out is more about crime prevention. We've taken this time and effort. We have several communities that are choosing to be involved and have their own events, which is amazing, and we will have officers that go out and visit each one of those as we do have in the past. This year, we're having a large contingency that is going to be between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. behind City Hall, and we invite everybody to come. I also sent an email out this evening to the mayor and the council, and we hope everybody in the community comes out and joins us in the talk between the community and law enforcement. You can ask what we do. You can see what's in our cars. You can see, you know, what it looks like to be in a fire truck, so all of those things. So, thank you very much for this proclamation. Appreciate it.
ID 1439, Park Ranger Day proclamation, and I'd like to invite Park Ranger Alex Anderson to the lectern. Very proud of our new addition to our Parks and Community Services team. Issaquah has a Parks Ranger, and I'm not sure that everybody knows that. And a lot of parks. We have a lot of parks. Whereas World Ranger Day is celebrated worldwide on July 31st to celebrate the work rangers do to protect the planet's natural treasures and cultural heritage, and whereas the city of Issaquah's Park Ranger serves as a steward and ambassador of the city's parks, trails, and open spaces, the ranger position is intended to promote a safe and welcoming park experience through professional interaction with park patrons. And the Park Ranger is responsible for the routine patrol of approximately 1,800 acres of public lands owned by the city of Issaquah, which includes 23 parks, two cemeteries, native growth protection areas, natural resource conservation areas, wetlands, open space, and trails. And the Park Ranger works collaboratively with the Issaquah Police Department and Washington State agencies, the King County Sheriff's Office, and Regional Animal Services of King County to resolve park issues. And whereas the Park Ranger provides education of local codes and laws and responds to calls for service and investigates concerns relating to our park areas, and whereas the Park Ranger is sometimes the first point of contact for unhoused individuals in city parks. In partnership with our human services team, the Ranger provides assistance, guidance, and care through our homeless outreach program. Now therefore I, Mary Lou Pauli, mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim July 31st, 2023, to be Park Ranger Day in the city of Issaquah, and I invite the community to join me in thanking our Park Ranger team of one for their service and outstanding contributions. Do you want us to...
I'll keep this brief. Thanks all for the recognition. We don't really do this work as rangers for the recognition, obviously. It's not always easy, and it's not always fun, but it is meaningful, and I'm really privileged to serve a community that actually genuinely cares about its parks and open spaces. So, thank you all.
Thank you. So, you will now get a break from me because the last item under special business is not mine. ID 1521, presentation by the ICMA Army Senior Management Fellow, Ken Muslewhite. He's the Garrison Manager of the Army's Yuma Proving Ground, and City Administrator Wally Bobkowitz will come up and introduce our speaker and talk a bit or spell out ICMA's, so I'm not using an acronym. Thanks, Wally.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Ken. The city of Issaquah is fortunate once again this year to have a fellow from the U.S. Army come and join us to learn a little bit more about what we do to manage a city and also to learn a little bit more about what it takes to manage an Army installation. So, Ken is here. We welcome you and has a short presentation.
Councilmembers, Mayor, I think I've met most of you, had dinner with at least four of you this evening, and my first day here with your city is turning out much better than what I would have thought with some rain, since I haven't seen it in months because I'm also from Arizona, okay? Hey, I just wanted to real quick kind of go over some of the stuff that the Army does and why they actually send us out to look at the cities for further development, for our progression, our progression and growth, okay? Myself, I've been in the position as Garrison Manager for just over, just at a year, and prior to that, I was a Deputy Garrison Manager. I applied for this program while I was a deputy because it more appropriately fits that, but I'm still happy to be here. And in conversation with Wally earlier this year, I came up with the goals when I come here of just generally learning a better understanding of how city administration and management works, and with focuses on the way that your strategic plan is carried out. I saw that the first one was about 2019, and so I have a great interest in that from prior in my career. Also, resource management, because I think that Army money is so much different than money outside of the federal government. Even though there are so many federal grants and stuff, it's still much different. And then finally, just from a standpoint, from an issue that we are having on the Proving Ground, I'm more interested in retention and recruitment primarily of law enforcement officers because we have such a difficult time with that. And finally, final goal is to have fun while I'm here this weekend, and you guys have really got me off to a great start this week for that. Okay, slide, please. Just a little overview for the installation. We are about 1,300 square miles on this map here. The blue and the red are Yuma Proving Ground. We're the fourth-largest installation in the continental United States, and we have primarily three contolment areas, one airfield. The first contolment area, all these contolment areas, by the way, are in the southwest corner of this installation. The first contolment area is a housing area. We have privatized housing where most of our military workforce and a small part of our civilian workforce live. And then we have the Walker Contolment Area, which always get Walker and Howard confused, Howard Contolment Area, which is our office complex. Kofa is our industrial complex. We have an airfield for air operations. And then the rest of that 1,300 square miles is research, development, and testing of Army equipment in a desert environment to make sure it works when soldiers take it out into combat, okay? You can see that we support about 15,000 people, but to step that down just a little bit, like I said, we have about 600 people who work on base, only 3,000 people who actually work on the installation. Those other 15,000 are out in the surrounding community and have access to the base because of some affiliation with the military. And then, of course, our closest city is 26 miles away, and so if I want to go to a Walmart, I have to go 26 miles. and so if I want to go to a Walmart, I have to go 26 miles. And if I want to go to a Costco, I have to go three hours.
Oh, my gosh.
So, okay. One slide, please. I got on your website and I looked at the city's organizational development, and I love that you guys put Residence up above everything else that you guys have. I have the same, except I also have two separate Army commands that I report to. And so I don't put all that up there because it would get just a little bit convoluted. What I've noticed is that there's a whole lot of overlap between city administration and Garrison Management, but that there's a whole lot that's different also. I was unaware until I was talking with Wally this morning that this city does not have its own fire departments, that they contract for that. Whereas in the Army, we have our own fire trucks, our men, you know, emergency services and stuff like that. Just a really quick oriented to this slide. Those areas in gray are the areas that by Army Directive or Regulation must support an installation. So, for instance, Logistics Raiding and Center is what I go to for all my vehicular maintenance. Any of my Public Works vehicles that need maintenance, they go to them. They manage all that for me. Okay? The green area on this slide is a position that sometimes a Garrison will have and sometimes not, depending on the enlisted soldiers assigned to it. I have two enlisted soldiers. I get a dual-hatted Sergeant Major that is owned by a Colonel that helps me with those two soldiers' career progression. And then the green-yellow area with the Staff Judge Advocate, those are actually our lawyers. It's a combined office between my lawyers and the lawyers of the other commands on the installation. And so if I walk into the office and I need contract law, it doesn't matter if it's my lawyer that does it or not, I get contract law. If I need labor law, I go to the labor law lawyer, and it doesn't matter which command owns him. It's a combined office, and they work for the entire installation. Okay? And then the rest is just our organization. I know that some of these terms are a little bit foreign. Director of Operations is Fire, Police, Security, Intelligence, Anti-Terrorism, and probably a few more things I can't think of off the top of my head. I think Public Works is pretty much standard. Human Resources is standard. Director to Family, Morale, Welfare, and Recreation is partially the parks that you have for Parks and Regulation, but partially not because I also have to run restaurants for the installation. And so in addition to pools, libraries, fitness centers, I'm running restaurants also. Okay? Resource Management, I think, is the same. And Installation Safety, I think, is pretty clear. I have a safety office that goes out because the research, development, and testing is dangerous work, and they are the ones who make sure that it's safe for me. Equal opportunity is standard. And then Plans Analysis Integration, I think the counterpart is this is the office that does my strategic planning if I had a full enough office to actually do strategic planning. So since my background is strategic planning, I'm working directly with them to initiate that in the very near future. We started the SWAT about six weeks ago, and we'll work our way through that to get it moving so that we can actually get a strategic plan in. Okay, next slide. I think I've taken up enough of the council's time unless you have any questions for me tonight.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Ken, thank you for the presentation. We really like participating in this program, so I hope you really enjoy your stay here with us.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So I recognize we have a lot of our visitors still in the room tonight. We're going to proceed with the rest of our meeting, and I just want to assure you that you only have to stay if you want to stay. So we have a couple more business items to get through, but we don't mind when people just quietly exit when they're kind of done. So feel free to do as you like, and thank you for coming. So this next item under the agenda this evening is Audience Comments, and this is the time that members of the public may address counsel in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. And if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, press *3. And if you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. If you are in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Mayor Polly, nobody has signed up prior to the meeting to speak.
I'll just check in the room. Is there anybody that would like to speak at public comments? Just raise your hand, and I can call you up. Okay. Come on up. Let me read a few more little guidelines, but you can come up to the podium if you want. So if you are making comments tonight, please direct your comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this isn't a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. You are at the dial, and you need to press the button on top of the microphone to get the microphone on read. That's great. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. And resident comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes these comments seriously, and we thank you for taking the time to address us. If you want to just say your name and relationship to the city, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Brandon Dahl. I work on business consulting and stuff like that, but I've been kind of talking to the city council up in North Bend, met with Rob McFarland and his kind of campaign manager. Came down here because I was kind of trying to do volunteer work in the city, but I kind of noticed that there's been a lot of issues with getting through to actually people and getting things set up properly. So I just wanted to address like volunteer programs and different things to try to see what the processes are going on that and kind of how you guys are structurizing going in the future. Because like the CERT program, I've contacted them and haven't got back on that kind of stuff. I've contacted the Police Department. There's no actual like volunteer program set up on that side of it. So my question is, is kind of what's the process of volunteer programs to get younger kids and youth into actually helping out in the community?
That is great. What I'll end up doing is have City Administrator Bobkowitz, if you can fill your name and address and email address onto the speaker sheet. We'll make sure that somebody emails you back with all the different kinds of opportunities, whether they're for adults or youth. And thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak before I close public comments? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. And as a reminder, at any point in time, you can write to citycouncil@issquawa.gov. Next item on the agenda this evening is the Consent Calendar, and I do not have any remarks on tonight's consent calendar prior to motion. And I'm wondering, are there any committee chairs that would like to speak on any of the consent calendar items? Okay, seeing none. The consent calendar was distributed to the council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under Regular Business? Not seeing any. Is there a council motion? Council President?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar as presented. Is there any council discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's a unanimous 7-0 vote. Moving on into Regular Business, ID 1464 is titled 2024 Budget Topics. And I'd like to invite our city administrator, Wally Bobkowitz, to present this item. Wally?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Get the presentation up. We're here tonight to continue the discussions we have been having with the council and always have with the council over the course of the year, looking for your guidance and direction as we look on the implementing of the city's strategic plan. At this point, we are getting ready for the mid-biennium budget amendments. And this is the first time we have had a mid-biennium budget amendment process. This is our first two-year budget. As the council will recall, you had a meeting a couple of months ago on a Saturday where you had an opportunity to look at the results of our community survey. You had an opportunity to look at the results of our performance measures for Calendar 22, and we asked the council to kind of reflect on that and give us some feedback. And from that feedback, we got five topics that we have gone back and looked at, took what the council said, kind of compared it to what's in our work plan, work plan for fiscal year '24, and are here this evening to react to that and get further feedback from the council on these areas. As you can see on the slide, the five areas were Public Safety, Transportation and Mobility, Planning and Permitting, Emergency Management, and Communications. Again, this is going to be the second year of our budget, so resources are already allocated in all of these areas. But what the administration's tried to do over the last couple of months is take the comments from the council, look more specifically at how we're allocating those resources, see if anything else has changed or come up that might have an impact on discussions for any budget amendments for the mid-biennium, and have those to talk about this evening. So we have several staff members here with us tonight. We have, if we go back to the other slide, Chief Paul Schwan. We'll talk a little bit about public safety. The biggest concern you'll hear from Chief Schwan is some additional issues that have arisen. We believe we can attack the issues raised by the council, areas of focus with existing resources, but there's some additional issues that we believe we'll need to take care of in the mid-biennium budget update, so she'll be here to talk about that. For Transportation and Mobility, we have our Public Works Director, Emily Moon. Again, a lot of focus and time has been spent over the last several months on issues of transportation and mobility. Significant resources are already budgeted for '24. We'll talk a little bit about that, but we also believe there'll be some adjustments that we need to better utilize those resources. So Director Moon will go through that. In the area of Planning and Permitting, Minnie Dollywall, our Community Planning and Development Director, is here this evening. Again, a lot of resources in this area. We want to talk about how we plan to focus those resources in the coming year. We have a new emergency manager here this evening. He'll be able to talk, I think, for the first time to the council about his plans. Again, we believe we have got appropriate resources, but we want to talk more specifically of how we intend to tackle some of the issues raised by the council earlier. And then finally, the area of Communications. Thomas, our Communications Manager, is here, and he'll talk about that as well. So our hope for the council this evening is to take in the discussion and provide some feedback. If you're hearing anything that you don't like, that you think there's additional focus or additional resources that the administration should consider in order to implement these programs, these initiatives, this emphasis on these five areas, please let us know. We will then come back to you in the fall with adjustment documents to the budget. It may be that we may need to make additional adjustments in order to pay for some of this. And so I don't want anyone to come here this evening and think that we've got a lot of additional resources. We feel very comfortable with the second year of the two-year budget with the resources we have allocated, but any additional resources we may need to make adjustments. We're not asking you to prioritize this evening. We're not asking you to offer up anything for reductions or changes, but we really would like your feedback so that when we do come to you with the changes for the mid-biennium budget update, that encompasses not only the administration's thinking, but the city council's thinking. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's sort of a preamble. Happy to answer any initial questions. Otherwise, I'll ask Paul Schwan, the Chief of Police, to step forward and do her portion of the presentation.
Not seeing any questions right now.
Great, Chief Schwan?
Good evening, again. Can I just advance it here? Okay. First thing I want to talk about is just our staffing update. And so we currently have three vacancies in Patrol, which is closer than we've ever been. And just to give you a heads up, we've already given three conditional offers, so those people are actually in backgrounds. So we have two others also that are waiting and going to be in backgrounds in the event, because we know we have a retirement coming up and some other pieces. So with that being said, we're almost completely fully staffed in Patrol, which is huge, and it's been a long two years to get there. We've also hired a Patrol Commander, and that Patrol Commander is going to oversee Corrections and Dispatch, as you met him at the last council, Mayor, or one of the two prior. In Dispatch, we have two vacancies currently. We also have two conditionals out, and they are in backgrounds as well, though we are almost, again, fully staffed in Dispatch as well. With Corrections, we have two vacancies. We did hire the commander, but we also have an acting corporal that we're hoping to fill soon. We had oral board for Corrections, and I have two Corrections vacancies. And with those vacancies, I have two offers out as well and conditionals. So they're also in backgrounds. So for all our vacancies currently in those three areas, Patrol, Dispatch, and Corrections, we already have people to fill those spots. We do have some other movements that's going to be coming. We think we have a retirement or two in Corrections, as well as another that's going to move closer to home and move to a different agency. So we're planning for that accordingly, and we have some oral boards more coming up with that as well. Other vacancies, we still have one commander spot to fill that we are going to be recruiting for. We have one record supervisor and two part-time evidence technicians, which we're going to be talking about in a little bit as it's been very difficult to fill with two part-time positions. So we're looking to the possibility of putting for one full-time. So that is something that's going to be on our request. With implementation of special details, that was one of the questions and the things that council had addressed and were interested in. Special details and roles, our Community Service Resource Officer. We also have the Public Programs, which that's what the CRO does. They do the Citizens or the Residents Academy. They do Paws on Patrol. They do the Parent Project. Those are the type of projects and the special events that we're going to try and be implementing again, starting in September. The other ones were our Traffic Unit. Our Traffic Unit was one of the other specialties that we hope to have another sergeant in and be getting our two designated traffic people in as well, starting in September. That's what our goal and our movement is at this time. And the other, we're advertising for interest in those special detail positions currently. That will go out this week. So we'll get the interest of those offers within TAOs that are wanting to fill those positions, and then we'll be moving forward with, hopefully, it'll happen. Interviews we're trying to hold in August as well, in a shorter span, so we can get everything implemented in September versus it being testing in September and then delayed even longer. So we are shooting for that. Worst case would be by mid-September, but we're hoping for September 1st. Crime Prevention Events and Analytical Data or Activities. National Night Out is August 1st, as we all talked about earlier today with proclamation. Themes surrounding it is current community crime prevention this year. And we also have a shoplifting theft blitz on the 26th. Not like I like to put it out there, but before it happens. But at the same time, we have several different businesses that are all on board, ready, and doing it together as a unified. So hopefully, that would be a very productive event, and we have been working with community members, with the retail business group, to make that happen. And then, based on crime analysis, we are successfully determining when and where to target specialty emphasis patrols, leading to arrests and deterring negative activities. Specifically, we had one recently where we are experiencing high criminal activity in the Highlands. And recently, that we have put Patrol up there, and it is deterred. We were able to single out dates or days that they were doing such things, and it's really deterred almost down to nonexistent. So that's been a huge benefit, and thanks to Ryan and all her great work she's been putting out to Patrol to have that information out there and be moving forward. She's been a huge asset for that. Crime Trends. Year-to-date, we have highlighted statistics. And so 15% decrease in total crime incidents as a whole. We have 23% decrease in property crimes. 35% of those decrease are in all burglaries, and 31% decrease in larceny or theft. So that's the most it's been seen in years, as far as the decrease goes. I hope it's from a lot of different things. But the Police Department has been very busy, all the officers, getting to work with the communities, with the businesses themselves, not just in enforcement action, but actually working with them and making sure those conversations are had. So we're building relationships at best we can. The new officers are all the ones that are being retrained and released from their FTO, have been working very hard and diligently to make those things happen. Cameras and IT needs. So this is into our jail needs. The jail facilities require constant surveillance, as you can imagine, and recent events have brought it to our attention that we need more than what we currently have. And so we want to install cameras in all the cells. Right now, we don't have them in every single cell. So if someone were to go into one of the cells, they're not always protected, and we don't always have that in the cell. It's on the adjacent areas or common areas more around. And so this will allow us to have cameras in every single cell where they're legally to be there, and will increase the surveillance for safety purposes of not only the staff, but also the inmates and/or residents that live for temporary short stays or longer stays in our establishment. The increased staffing has been a big piece. There is a minimum requirement of two correctional officers per shift now in the coverage for all, and the area of the cameras will help cover those people, and a multitude of inmates and their needs. However, the number of inmates continues to increase. Staff is considering the addition of two corrections corporal's positions because not only with the increase of inmates and staff, span of control, and having some supervision, not just during the daytime, but also in a staggered between swing shifts and also some of the graveyard hours. So as you can see on this slide, total inmates is on the rise. From year-to-date, last year was 776. We're already up to 957, and average daily inmates is 43.8, was gone up to 54.5. And in case you weren't aware, didn't remember, 72 beds is our current capacity, which is a lot of people in our jail. And that's only minimal for how many we can house as far as the females versus the males. We have a lot more space for the males, but we do balance that, and we keep that. And that's still a lot of people, and imagine, that's 72 people with only two people minimum. And so having those staffed to where they can cover all the different shifts, monitor that many people, or if an incident does take place, having some of the overlap so they have oversight as well. Those are integral parts to having the staffing that is necessary in growing that. Dispatch needs. Increased staffing for more dispatchers are required to keep on top of the increasing proportion of emergency calls we are receiving within growing population. Staff is considering the addition of one dispatcher, which is approximately $130,000. The reason for the, right now, we are, all the shifts are covered, and it's great. The problematic piece is, we had one that had to go on medical for a period of time. When that happens, then everybody else has to jump on board and take all of these different pieces instead of having a coverage person, or even two, that manages those shifts or covers when people want to take time off or when they're ill. And so, as you can imagine, if we were at any of your jobs and someone wasn't there to balance that out, everybody else has to jump on board. It's the same factor. And so when we're a 911 center that dispatches for multiple different agencies, and it's a requirement and you're a lifeline for these officers, as well as the residents that call in 911, it becomes problematic. And currently, we have one supervisor, and we have one lead. We're hoping to finish, and we have another lead spot we're hoping to fill here soon. We have 10 dispatchers, and so we're asking for that one more currently. As you can see with the graph also, City of Issaquah, population of almost 41,000. We have 33 officers. City of Snoqualmie has a population of 22,000 with approximately 22 officers. And then North Bend with a population of 7,300, almost 7,400. The 22 officers for Snoqualmie-North Bend, that covers both those jurisdictions. So it's not just, so that's why there's not a number next to that, because Snoqualmie covers North Bend. So the other piece to this that's not mentioned here on the slide is that, starting in 2024, it used to be that wherever you were at your cell, when you would call a 911, it would ping to whatever tower you were on. So you'd go to WSP, or you'd go to King County. Well, starting in 2024, with new technology, as you can imagine, if you're anywhere within our city limits, no matter where you're at, they're, it's going to know that you are. So if you're on I-90 in our city, you're going to trigger our dispatch center. So that being the case, we're going to, our 911s will increase comparatively to even what it's been in the past. So our calls for service will go up because of that piece alone. Body cameras. This is what in the 2024 budget, and it's been pushed out, that we had the pilot program that haven't started yet. This is a small image of what, similar to what our cameras are going to look like, and every officer will have one. Our corrections will not have them yet. It is something that we're looking at too for future, but right now, it's just the patrol officers. And with this aspect and implementation, it's still shooting for quarter one of 2024. We're looking for the pilot program to be before that. We're looking to mid-September for that to be. We're finishing up the policies. We're finishing up the public disclosure request piece of that, which also includes the part of when the pilot program starts, if someone requests one, we have to be able to know what to charge them, because it takes a lot of effort to bring out all those camera angles and submit that for disclosure. So we're looking at and working on all those pieces. Each camera has increased visibility with a four to three aspect ratio, 160-degree field of view. Cameras can automatically share live streams with support teams and command. So for example, it's not to watch Big Brother. It's not for me to be listening in or watching the officers. If I get called and I'm at my house and there's an emergent situation, I can pull up my screen and see what the officers are seeing and make command decisions from there as well. And so it just gives us a better span of control, and then I can also have communication without them having to call or tell me what's going on, but I can still have that conversation with real-time information. And so that's what it's intended for, and also for the protection of staff and for the residents themselves. So there, well, those policies will be put in place with me talking to the equity board and seeing anything that they as well have, and questions they have to be brought up. And so that's a part of that implementation. And cameras will also, 167 waterproof, longer-life battery, which is.
And I think you've got a question, Chief.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chief Schwann. So, and I want to make clear that I think body cameras are a good idea, but I was listening to KUOW a couple of days ago, and they were talking about the difficulty of keeping up with all the storage and of, what would you say, digitizing everything and making sure that it was all searchable and so forth. And they're finding out that they needed double the number of people that they had originally projected to do that work. I don't know if you're hearing anything about that, or if people are working on solutions to this sort of data overload that's coming out of the body cameras. Do we have any idea about how many people it might take to actually take that data and put it into a searchable format?
Great question. Thank you. We've had a team of people between our IT, our record staff, our record supervisor, that have gone out, and we wanted to learn from others and what they've done to implement this program, and problems they've found before they got started. And so we wanted to learn and not reinvent the wheel. So we went up to multiple agencies that also have our same report writing system or our record system. And so we made sure that our data merging and what the base was in keeping that in the cloud and the downloading and all of that, and how many to do the research. And so we've looked at all of that, and they've put that all together. And so our staff between the IT department and records is working on what those pieces are, and we're making sure those questions are asked in advance, so we are prepared for what that looks like long-term. Yes. Great question.
Councilmember Ray.
Thanks, Mayor Paulie. I just want to kind of piggyback on Councilmember DeMichele on body cams. Have we looked at redaction and how we're going to manage redaction of images with the body cams?
Yes. So one of those major pieces that we looked for, and we asked that question, is this program that we're looking at and we're looking to purchase and that is going to pilot the program, actually does a 95% to 97% data redaction through the program. It's already implemented in the cost that we're doing, so we don't have to hire extra staff to do all of that. Now, there will be times when there's going to be an arm that goes across, or there's going to be something that will be missed, so it will still be reviewed, but before it's released. But at the same time, the program itself does a majority of that redaction. And so we made sure those questions were asked, and that's a huge piece, and we wanted to make sure, do we have to have five more people to do this? Or that's part of, because they're not, we're not the first person that have purchased this program, and they have done a great job with implementing and realizing the deficiencies and what's been necessary. But that was a big piece, because that was one of my big concerns with how many records people I needed, for sure.
That's great. Thank you.
Good to go. All right. Other way, city is addressing community survey results, because we know that we did see the results of the community survey. We're making sure we have a visibility of our police. We're encouraging our staff to make sure they're out and about, they're in the different communities. Reminding our staff that just because they're not responding to a crime, or maybe they're not at a call for service, they're driving around the city, is sometimes presence alone helps deter things from happening, whether it be in the commercial areas, whether it be in residences, whether it be at night, and then sometimes going through a neighborhood twice in a row. They think, oh, they're gone, and then I can go do whatever, but then we come through again, and then you don't know when your partner's going through. So we're really encouraging high visibility. We're also encouraging, if you need to take a break, or you just are waiting for a certain call, or to head somewhere, we park in front of a business. So we're trying to, visibility is a big piece. Another thing we're also, is we obviously increased our staffing, which has been hugely helpful, and also getting people into those specialties. Now, being that we're almost fully staffed, we still have a lot of entry level and people that are still getting trained and working through those steps. So that's another piece we're working towards and getting everybody trained, and all our FTOs, I want to thank them publicly, because they've been nonstop, and they have still a long road ahead of them. And so I'm very proud of them for all the work that they put in in training and getting people that will work side-by-side them on a soon basis. So we're thankful for them and all the work that they've put in. We've increased patrols, like I said, in the areas, not just in the reporting. We have availability of information about police activities and programs. We have the police blotter, which Ryan does on a weekly basis. She's done an amazing job. The annual and monthly reports, which gets everybody thing out, to everybody, anyone that subscribes or is interested in that information. We've also out on Facebook quite a bit, messaging all the activities that we're doing. Sometimes it's activities, not just the fun stuff like National Night Out or Salmon Days to Come. Sometimes it's also things that, great work that's been done, whether it's be arrests of people that have committed crimes or people that have been victims. We want them to know that something has been accomplished, and they can feel safer that people are being held accountable. And plans for enhanced data dashboard and crime mapping available to the public. So that's something also that Ryan and the staff are working on to make more available as people would like to have that information. Other crime prevention efforts, increased staffing for the programs, as mentioned before, reviewing and building programs, going through the pause-on patrol, building up those residence academies again, the parent projects, because they were always very successful programs. People really thanked us for those, and we're excited and asking when they were coming back, so we're excited to get those going again and working with those relationships. Partnership with businesses to target shoplifting. The retail business meetings have been going regularly. We even asked them if they wanted to cut back from once a month, and they wanted to continue. And there's a huge group that's been very interactive with us, and it's been very successful and very proud to have some of those relationships. Sometimes having those, it's building that trust again, and that's been growing greatly, and we're very pleased for a lot of those relationships. And we've added some, the crime analysis component to increase emphasis patrols in those areas as specified earlier. This has also increased our reporting. We're also telling people how to report, not only with their, my little PSAs from Tim, but also we've encouraged them with online, different things that they're able to report. The things that we're asking for, and that's at National Night Out, we'll also be discussing what to expect when you call 911, and/or what information we're looking for, or why we need the information we ask for, and what's required and what's not. So those are the big things that we've, we're using to otherwise touch base on the community results. And I believe that's it for me. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that anyone might have.
Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Paulie. And I'm going to scoot a little bit away from Councilmember Marks when I ask this question, but given the increase in the cost of dispatch and the potential changes in 2024 that you mentioned, have we looked at, just from a cost perspective, what outsourcing dispatch might look like from a budget perspective?
We have not. We have no plans to outsource dispatch. We are looking at what we charge our neighbor jurisdictions for dispatching, but we have no plans to outsource dispatch.
Which, actually, thank you for teeing up my other question, which is, with the increase in population at the jail, is that having any impact on the fees that we're looking to charge our partners for jail services or jail beds?
Excellent question. We are also looking at our contracts that we currently have, and with COLA rates and everything moving and improving, we are also adding at least a 5% increase, asking that in the new contracts that will be pushed out as well.
Great. Thank you.
Additional questions for Chief? Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you for your time.
So Madam Mayor, our plan, we've got a few other areas to go through, so we'll make the presentation, answer any initial questions, then come back for general discussion. Is that?
That sounds great.
Very good. Thank you. Next up, thank you, Chief, is our Public Works Director, Emily Moon.
Good evening. Here to discuss what we're doing in transportation and mobility. You all will recall that in spring, city administration and I presented some of the needs in this arena. I'm happy to say we've made a lot of progress thus far in filling our positions. Still a little bit of work to go, and we've put to good work the professional services dollars that you also gave us permission for at that time. Some of the current things that we're working on right now, and will continue to work on in 2024, you see on your screen, I'm going to lightly touch on each of these because they're in your packet. Bottom line is, we still have a lot on our work plan. We think that all of these activities and more are in service to improving mobility and transportation in the community, and we're, again, at that point where we just need to execute. We need to implement these things, make progress on the capital project, and complete our work in designing the future for our infrastructure. So on this list, we have Metro Flex. Metro Flex has been before the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee recently. Will be coming back to city council for discussion at the first meeting in August, August 7th. And that's a moment in time where the full council will hopefully provide some direction in terms of the pursuit of King County's point-to-point on-demand service that is being proposed. Our ITS Plan, Intelligent Transportation System Program, has been evaluated. We are still working on the final report that has a significant implementation plan. It includes some pieces that are already built in to the capital budget and the operating budget that you have approved. We will be speaking with you more about that this fall. We also are in the midst of putting together the capital projects you see on the list, the Issaquah Safety Bundle, Front Street, Streetscape, Alder Festival Street, and the strategic small capital projects. All of those include design and construction phases. Another significant mobility improvement that is in the works, and that you have just helped us get underway through blessing the contract, is the I-90 Crossing Planning Study. And as you may know, we're doing a lot of outreach on the transit study right now. We expect that we will be sharing those results with you in the near future and the whole community as well. So that's what we have, in part, going on right now. My focus is really just to make sure, again, that we can implement the resources and the activities that you have given us direction on. I've mentioned Metro Flex Shuttle. This will be an item that will be considered as part of the mid-biennial budget update as it is not currently budgeted within the 2024 budget. And then the second piece on this slide is to do a reclassification for one of our senior signal techs. In the spring, you gave me permission to go and fill a third signal tech position. Happy to say we have done that, but we have an individual that is a long-term employee, a master electrician, an invaluable resource to the city that I want to retain and who I believe has been doing above and beyond the classification. And so I'd like to address that, both for a retention standpoint, but also provide some growth opportunities within our workforce. With that, I will answer any questions that you have about transportation and mobility.
Councilmember DeMichele.
So I believe we have a couple of positions that are limited-term employment, and I'm wondering for long-term planning, and we have a number of really significant projects. I love the list. Thank you very much. But we have some long-term projects that are going to take some time, and I'm just wondering if there's been any consideration of converting those positions to full employment or continuing employment.
Sure. Currently, my department has one individual who is a limited-term employee, who works closely with community planning and development as well on our transportation planning. That individual has been the primary on Metro Flex, as you know. And I would love to retain him and that position. We need people. We need people to get the work done. But for the biennial budget that hasn't been included, it'd be something that we consider for the next biennial budget.
Any other questions? Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Hunt.
The Metro Flex Shuttle will be a pilot program. And so I'm wondering if you can speak to a little bit about how we're going to be assessing the pilot program at the end of this pilot year, what sort of data is being collected and surveys before and after?
Sure, sure. And I don't have that comprehensive list in front of me. There are a bunch of metrics that we've spelled out in the Mobility and Infrastructure Meeting and I'd be happy to get you that full list for the August council meeting. I just don't have it in front of me. But a lot of metrics on ridership, of course, on the types of trips that are being taken so that we can better understand that and make sure the, the means are fitting the actual community needs. We also will be looking at where people go. We will be looking at the integration with other fixed routes, transportation systems. So there's a variety of data that we will be looking for. And we have a, a project schedule, as you suggested, to sit down with King County Metro, discuss those, make sure that it's meeting community need, that also look at it from the financial investment side, make sure that it's the wisest use of our dollars to get at the problems that we want to correct with our mobility gaps. And we will be bringing that data back to City Council.
Thanks. Any additional questions? I'm not seeing any. Thanks, Director Moon.
Next, Minnie Dollywall, our Community Planning and Development Director.
Good evening, members of the council and community members. So our part here is really focused on improving service. So we've gone through the code update process and have undertaken the implementation phase of the code update. What we learned from the survey, we're taking all of that into consideration, as you know. Land use planning was number two priority. As we gleaned and got into what was really implied and, you know, we did our best to understand, overall built environment was above, you know, 60%. Folks were satisfied with that. Quality of new development was only slightly up. Ease of getting permit was 8%, but you know, 65% said, don't know. So we coupled that with our own survey that we do of the applicants, because people may not have had to get a permit through the community survey of, of all the people that filled out that survey. When we couple that with our own survey that we've done, I think it's important to note there were high marks for professionalism of the staff in online permitting. People were satisfied with that. We certainly understand there's room for improvement and clarity of the process and the timing of the reviews. And we're committed to working on that within our existing resources. There were also high marks for environmental stewardship, which is across the city. And of course, we heard need to increase availability of affordable housing and improve how we plan for growth. So in our budget for this year, we already have, you know, council's given us a lot of resources related to long-term planning for the comprehensive plan update and the EIS work that we're doing. There was money included in the last biennial budget. We also had some money allocated for implementation of housing strategies. And that's also implementing the legislative bills that came through our way and then also to do parking study. So all of those are funded. The budget also included an affordable housing planner position that, you know, council was previously briefed on. We are using a fabulous in-house resource with Jen Davis Hayes, taking on some of that responsibility. So we will come in and give you a more up-to-date detail of what staff is working on, permit process and procedures in fall and how we're best allocating our existing resources. But happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Director Dollywall. Thank you, Minnie.
Next is Emergency Management. And I believe, Jared, this is your first appearance at the City Council. Jared Schneider, our new emergency manager.
Hello, folks. Yes, hello. My name is Jared Schneider. I am your new emergency manager. It is a pleasure to be in front of you today, especially given that it is not an emergency and everything is raining and wonderful outside. So like I said, yes, I am the new emergency manager. Before this role, I was with King County Office of Emergency Management for five years. Before that, I was with the Red Cross. During my time at King County, we saw floods, landslides, wildfires, pandemic, you name it. So coming with some emergency baggage, if you will, to this position. Some of you may also recognize me. I was actually here a couple of years ago, speaking to you all about wildfire risk. I was co-leading an effort to develop the King County Wildfire Risk Reduction Strategy. We brought it to you all to gather input and feedback and support for it. We released it about a year ago with Mayor Polly up in, up in Miramont. And it was a great, a great event. And it's so far, it's been well received and we're taking actionable steps in our region to reduce our risks. So with that being said, it's great to be on Team Isqwa so far, 10 weeks in, but they've been lovely 10 weeks. Everyone's been very kind and I'm excited to be here. So it's great to meet you. With that, my slide deck is pretty light. Like I said, I've only been here 10 weeks, so I'm only discovering what the priorities of the emergency management program should be here in Isqwa. That being said, there's three main categories that I'm seeing as early winners, if you will. Emergency operations that are readiness. So making sure that we're ready as a city to respond to any disaster, be it small or large. Community resilience, ensuring our community is prepared, that there's self-reliance and awareness of our hazards in our community. Risk reduction, ensuring that as our community grows, that the protective actions that we take to protect our city also grow with the city. Those are the three early priorities that I'm seeing. But again, they may change as time goes on. So speaking of wildfire, it's, it's fun to talk about it on a day like this as it's raining, the only day in the summer where it feels like it's been raining. But what you see in front of you here is Eastside Fire and Rescue's calls to brush fires. And this is a seven-year period, so it's quite a busy map. Keep in mind that brush fires are very small, actually. They're only about 20 feet by 20 feet. So while this, while this does look like there's a lot of them going on, keep in mind that they are relatively small incidents. There's no separate category within EFER for wildfires. They just don't collect that type of data. But I wanted to share this all with you all, to know that we're thinking about it over here on the public safety, emergency management side, but also too, that we're looking into data, right? We're trying to understand our risk better for our community. And this is just one of the ways that we're doing that. With that being said, there are some short-term actions that we are undertaking to reduce our risk of wildfire currently. Eastside Fire and Rescue is developing a community wildfire protection plan. What this is, is just a plan that helps you understand your risk. They're breaking it down by cities and then within the cities, we're breaking it down by neighborhoods. So Isqwa, we are also planning in conjunction with EFER. Plenty of other cities are also in the effort of planning for, in the same community wildfire protection plan. We don't have a full list yet. They just had a kickoff a couple of weeks ago. But these plans are great, like I said, for understanding risk. They help you plan for emergency response, whether it be evacuation or sheltering. And then also, they really spell out what you're going to do in your neighborhoods about reducing that risk, right? So whether it's like, things like metal roofs or areas of limited ingress and egress into community, that's all found within those plans. The other thing that we're doing is communications. So with the help of Thomas and his lovely team, we are pushing out more information about wildfires and really pushing the message that Isqwa is wildfire country and that we should be ready and prepared for one. A big part of that is alert notification. So in King County, we have a service called Alert King County. It's a signup service where residents can put in their information and it is what we use to notify residents in any emergency. Now, we pulled some numbers in Isqwa. There's only about 1,000 residents signed up right now for Alert King County. There's 17,000 more that we have from an emergency 911 database. So we do have confidence that we can reach, you know, a fraction of the community, but obviously, we want to see that number go up, right? So that's going to be one of the big things that we're pushing for in this public communication is sign up for Alert King County so you can know about wildfire or any hazard that's in the community. With that, that's actually my last slide. Like I said, it's great to meet you all. If you have any feedback, any suggestions, if you've heard anything from the community that you think is a priority for the emergency management program, I'd love to hear it. It's a perfect time as I'm just stepping into this role. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you, Jared, and welcome. Council President.
Thank you. Really appreciate you're here. I would love to talk to you about CERT and all of that. You talked about communication as a kind of proactive. Have, do you have plans to have conversations about the reactive nature of emergencies and how we can effectively have a communication strategy, both for our residents and our employees and all of those things in the case of an emergency?
Yeah, absolutely. So the procedures are laid out already. I know we have some SOPs that describe what we are to do. The tools are well-known to those of us, you know, in those, in those roles to notify, but there's always room for improvement, I should say, you know? Whether it's pre-scripting messages or pre-translating messages, those are things that we should consider and that we can build out in the future. And we hope to do so for really all of our hazards that would require something like an evacuation.
Any other questions for Jared? Councilmember Hunt?
I, I recall, so I did the CERT program a few years ago now. And at the time, there was also Map Your Neighborhood where you got to know who else was in your neighborhood and if they had pets or if they had, you know, how many people were in the home and things like that, to make sure that everybody did get out in the case of an evacuation and also just, you know, your neighbors. And I was wondering if that is still what you would, if you would still recommend people participate in that program? And then generally, in addition to signing up for the emergency notification, what you would recommend people in Isqwa do to prepare at this point, like where they should go to get that first information about what to sign up for and all of that?
Yeah. So to your first point, yes, Map Your, Map Your Neighborhood is a great program. It's been around for a very long time. It's very popular or had been previously. I think its popularity has gone down a little bit as I think some communities feel more isolated. People are a little less anxious or more anxious to get to know their neighbors in some instances. And I know that the instructors that we do have that do Map Your Neighborhood have felt that. They've felt that there hasn't been very many requests. With that being said, I would love to rediscover and rebuild out that program because I do think it's great. And no one, your neighbor's going to be the first person that's there, you know, to check on you in, in any emergency. We, we heard the chief talk about staffing shortages and the challenges that's been there, right? No one knows your neighborhood like your neighbors. And so, yes, I think it's a great product. It's something that I would love to explore more. I just don't know enough actually about where Isqwa has been with the program and how many instructors that we actually have locally still active. To your second point, yeah, Alert King County truly is the best place to find emergency information. I wish I had the URL in my brain, but if you Google Alert King County, it will come up. And what's great about that service too is it's already, there's eight languages too that you can already learn into as well. So there's already some of that built into it, but that is the place to go.
Good question. Any other questions for Jared? Awesome. Well, thanks so much.
Thank you. It was great.
And Mayor, members of the council, the last area we'd like to talk about in response to your discussions earlier this year is our communications efforts. And Thomas Ross, our communications manager is here.
Good evening, councilmembers. First off, I'm going to start as a member of the communications team. I'm more excited than anyone that Jared's here because I'm the one responsible for making sure we get that messaging out. So I'm also very glad he's here. Excuse me. To start, I just wanted to highlight a few of the work plan items that we've recently accomplished. A lot of them tie to what we heard in the community survey. To start, we recently released a new version of our city projects page that includes a new map-based view. This lets residents explore what projects are happening around town, that either in their neighborhoods or perhaps on their routes out of town, just providing new perspective on ways to see what's happening around town. For those who really enjoyed browsing our city projects by list, that's still there, broken down in nice convenient categories based on the topic. So we've seen a lot of popularity with that already. Happy to keep expanding on that. The second one is in the community survey, we saw that people had a noticeable uptick in our response to engaging diverse audiences. We feel this is directly tied to the fact that now all of our surveys are translated into Spanish and Mandarin, which really reduces the barrier to provide feedback to the city on important topics. We've also recently released two new e-newsletters to go along with Isqwa Inside or General One and Mayor Polly's newsletter as well. These two are the Park Bench and Green Isqwa. Both are topic-based. So Park Bench really talks about the wonderful things our Parks Department is doing. It reaches out to all those audiences that have registered for programs or just taken part in various activities. So a nice, really robust subscriber base to get information from us. And Green Isqwa is brand new. I think we're on issue number two right now, but that talks about all of the wonderful stewardship and volunteer events that we're doing to really increase sustainability in town through our Parks Department. I'm super excited by this next point. Through the pandemic, we really were forced to pivot and have a lot of virtual meetings to get feedback from community members. But since 2023, we've decided to make it standard that working with project managers will bring back in-person events. So we've already had a few open houses for various topics. They were well-attended. We talked to a few, you know, anecdotally, a few residents who were just excited to be in the same room as project managers to be able to ask their questions and get immediate feedback. Finally, we know this was a priority from council to improve our onsite signage for public projects. I'm happy to say we have a new template in place that does a great job of providing detailed information to people who are passing by project sites and then also provides translations and QR codes to those who want to find out more online. Those are the things we've recently accomplished. Looking forward, we're pretty excited that we are doing a refresh for our city website. It's been five years since we redesigned it last. Somehow, that's already been five years. It's kind of blowing my mind. With that, it's a design change. So we won't be restructuring the entire website again. This one really focuses on the user experience and the layout, seeing what best practices happen from other municipalities who've recently upgraded and taking borrowing the best practices they've come up with and bringing them to Isqwa too. So with that, I think we're hoping to aim towards the end of December 2023 or early 2024 to release that. So more to come there. As Jared alluded to, we're really making a specific emphasis on campaigns to get people to sign up for King County Alert and other programs to improve our ability to provide emergency information on specific topics like wildfire and flood safety. What we've done in the past has worked in terms of getting outreach out there, but I think we can do even better. So that is going to be a priority for communications. Finally, we're going to look at additional analysis for what public engagement needs we might need for the next, next budget cycle. I feel confident what we have right now works really well, but in the field of communications, things change rapidly. So we will keep our eye open for what other municipalities are doing around the country and see if we can bring those same tools to use for residents here. Short and sweet, happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Thomas. Do we have any questions on communications? Council President.
Thank you. What is prompting us to consider a website redesign? Do we feel like there is more user experience or is it just, it's been five years and we feel like that's time?
Yeah, we've made it a habit to try and make sure we update our website every five to seven years. The last one was a major redesign of it all. Those kind of changes are prompted by feedback from residents and for just seeing what best practices exist. This one is really about just refreshing and provide new tools at our, our vendor. Civic Plus comes out with new things. So you, to institute those, you have to update the newest designs. So we take this chance to also make the website look great and be even more useful to residents. So just, it's periodic. That's the underlying element, but we take this chance to really try to improve it too, to improve performance.
Okay. Next question. Are we using AI or any of the ChatGPT tools, something like that, as a way to enhance our communication strategy?
It's a great question. So that's an ongoing topic in the field of communications, really to figure out how best to utilize AI-based programs. At the moment, there doesn't seem to be a consensus on At the moment, there doesn't seem to be a consensus on how best to do that. I really want to make sure that we maintain a reasonable expectation for residents, what they can, you know, see coming down the line. So we'll continue to look into that. If, like I said, we see that the best practice starts to institute tools like ChatGPTs or other AI programs, we'll reevaluate what our current communication tools are and try and implement as well.
Thank you.
Great question.
Any other questions for communications? I'm not seeing anything.
Thank you all. Absolutely. One more.
There you go.
So, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, those are the five areas that we heard from the city council at its retreat a few months back. To summarize, you've heard a lot from the police department. We really feel that a fully staffed department will allow us to do a lot of the things that you're hearing from the community that we heard from on the community survey. So we're feeling really good about that. The part that we're feeling less good about are the continued challenges that we have operating in jail and a dispatch center. We want to do that. We want to continue to offer those services. We want to make sure we're doing it in a safe, responsible manner. And so as we look at the adjustments to the mid-biennium budget, you will see some requests in those areas. On the area of transportation, as Director Moon said, we've got a lot on our plate. We think we need to just make some small additional adjustments from a staffing perspective in order to continue to move forward in that. Lots on the capital program as we consider a sales tax for transportation over the next several months. Certainly something we're very focused on. The other three areas, we don't believe we need additional resources, but as you've heard this evening from the responsible managers, we want to tweak some of our focus on the planning, reviewing of current applications. We've heard you, we've heard the community, that there is still frustration with that process. Title 18 was a big step forward. Additional new staff members in our planning division is also a big step forward. We now need to walk that talk and continue to return to you on a regular basis with data as we continue to improve in that area. Emergency management, I think Jared did an excellent job of explaining sort of the high-level points that we need. You know, the resources for emergency management are really tricky. We feel comfortable at this point with the one FTE. We may need additional resources moving forward, but we want to spend at least this next year in '24 focusing on the areas that Jared described. And then finally, in communication, something everyone is struggling with, certainly coming out of the pandemic, changes of how people communicate all over. We want to be everything to everybody. We want to be every place. And so we will spend some more time talking with colleague agencies, looking at more interesting and diverse ways to communicate with people during '24. And as we come back to you with the next biennium budget for '25 and '26, hopefully have some new ideas. So that is our response to what we heard. Look for your additional feedback this evening. The slide talks about the calendar that we are proposing moving forward. At your next meeting on August 7th, we'll come with a final report on year-end 2022 and a mid-year look as to where we're at with the current year budget, as well as look at revenue, any revenue changes we're seeing for the balance of '23 into '24. On October 30th, we would like to have a committee of the whole to discuss Mayor Polly's adjust, proposed mid-year, mid-biennium adjustments to the budget, which will reflect a lot of what you've heard this evening. We would then have a public hearing for the property tax levy and those mid-biennium adjustments on November 20th, and then ask the council to consider adoption of those changes on December 4th. This will also run parallel to the council's consideration of adjustment of the sales tax, and it is our hope at this point to closely follow the same schedule. So at this point, we're also looking at December 4th as being the date that we would ask the council to consider changes to the sales tax for transportation projects. That would allow us to implement that sales tax change in April of 2024. So two separate tracks, which we'll bring together as the year ends. Mayor Polly, that concludes our presentation. Happy to answer any questions and to get additional feedback.
Great. So let's start with questions and then we'll move into comments. Council President?
Thank you. So looking over this kind of budget schedule, this is obviously our first mid-biennium budget, so I look at the differences between this and a regular budget year. And one of the things that I notice is in a regular budget year, first of all, we would get the presentation of the budget in a meeting ahead of when we would talk about it. So that gives us time to absorb. And then we would have one separate meeting on what a revenue picture looks like, and then another meeting on what any ads changes, et cetera. Obviously, we want to streamline this and we don't want to repeat a budget scenario, but I'm trying to understand how we are going to have the time to react when what I'm seeing here is some potential proposed additions and then also hearing that there may need to be cuts in order to pay for those. So how, what flexibility do we have and how are we going to have the time to absorb the information, understand revenue, and understand any potential changes?
Looking at this calendar, the first discussion would be October 30th. We'll have all that information to you prior to that October 30th discussion. Then three weeks will pass between that cow and the public hearing, and then another couple of weeks before decision. So there's still quite a bit of time built into this process. Certainly, we do not anticipate the same number of moving pieces to this as we have with a regular consideration of the two-year budget. So we think the number of pieces will be pretty small. I think you've heard the lion's share of them this evening. So you don't anticipate a lot of additional ones. There will certainly be others, less significant. So I think we're feeling very comfortable with that time. I think this council's gotten very good at this, quite honestly. And so given the shorter number, the smaller number of changes, this should be fine.
So you think the meeting on the October 30th will include a brief review of the proposed ads, what our revenue situation looks like that necessitates potentially any cuts, and what the proposed cuts are? And then we will react to that on the 30th, because usually November 20th, that public hearing isn't a give and take so much as giving the community a chance to provide a recommendation, so.
And my sense is you'll have everything you need for a full and complete discussion prior to October 30th.
Any other questions before we move into comments and feedback? Councilmember DeMichele?
Just a quick question. Will there be an opportunity to add anything to the budget topics?
I think Councilmember DeMichele, tonight would be the night if there's additional issues that the council would like the administration to consider. Again, going back to, this is a two-year budget. And so the theory behind a two-year budget is that only those very significant changes in condition would be changes to that budget. So I think we've tried to give you what we sense as significant changes. Now, there's also the programmatic piece, which perhaps some organizations, some cities don't really talk about, and that is that shifting of emphasis, not changing resources, but how you use those existing budgeted resources. But we've had a little bit of that tonight. But if there's anything else on the council's mind for changes in '24, we'd really like to hear them.
Okay. Are we still on questions then?
Yeah. And do I have any other questions? Otherwise, we can just start going into comments. I can start with Councilmember DeMichele. I think we're good. Go ahead.
Well, first of all, I, you know, sitting here and also the luncheon we had today, just deep appreciation for our staff. We had such excellent presentations tonight and also just acknowledging all of the work that goes into making this such a great city. And so I just want to start my remarks by saying that it's just such an honor to serve with such absolutely wonderfully dedicated people. So thank you to everybody. You know, and I, I think maybe what you just said about programmatic changes rather than financial changes, but City Manager Bob Quitz is aware that I'm really concerned about the arts review that we're going to do in 2024, and I just want to ensure that we have enough resources to do a full and complete job. So I'm, you know, I'm not suggesting that we add that to the topics, but I would just like more information about what the budget for that process will be and maybe some, just some preliminary ideas about how we're going to do that arts review and the scope of that. And so those would be my questions, really. And then with that feedback, perhaps I would want to come back and add that as a topic, but right now, I don't know that I have enough information to actually add it or to suggest that it be added. But that is a big, big continuing concern of mine, that we do a really thorough job of that art review so that we, again, we get the arts program that we want, not the one that we can afford. So I think we need to do some visioning around that topic. So that would be my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? You want to go, Councilmember Joe, and then we'll do Council President?
Thank you. I'll join Councilmember DeMichele in complimenting the administration on the gold certification for our city. We're one of only five in the entire state and the only one in the state that has the gold certification, and that really says a lot about the dedication of the people that have been working on environmental issues for years and years in the city. One of them, of course, was Ken Conan's Mark, who we honored tonight. I'll just comment that looking at the budget adjustments, I really appreciate the administration's emphasis on getting dispatch, police, and the jail to full staff if at all possible. We have a unique position in Isqwa with our court system and the police because we coordinate so closely with Snoqualmie and North Bend and because Duval uses our jail along with Snoqualmie and North Bend, oh, Duval uses our court, too, excuse me. We have the ability to be a little bit more of a regional public safety center. And if we're fully staffed and can reach out to the other communities and support them, it makes all of us stronger here on this side of the lake, so to speak. So I really appreciate the emphasis that's being made there. I think that those are dollars well-invested in public safety, and we'll go a long way to make the entire area safe, safer and ensure our, especially our storekeepers and our businesses that we're taking public safety very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. I'll jump on and say I really appreciate this as a schedule, you know? I've been a little bit nervous about what a two-year budget looks like from our ability to make changes as needed and be responsive to what we're hearing in the community. But I think we've set up a good system here of focusing on the community survey and our performance metrics and using that to be reactive. And then I really appreciate recognizing that, you know, our staffing can change in a year and our needs can change. And so being reactive to that or responsive to that and presenting this is really appreciated. I also really appreciate that in cases where we gave an area that we thought needed emphasis because of what we were seeing out of the community survey or the dashboard, that the reaction wasn't just, let's throw staff and money at it. It can be, let's make adjustments. So I wanted to highlight, I was very concerned with the permitting numbers that we see in our dashboard, the permit review times. We have not met those. And so I am definitely going to be looking at that. I hope we can see that on more of a quarterly basis and really understand what, what we are doing and how that's moving the needle. I think that is really important, especially with the changes that have been made at the state level, whether we're going to see the type of housing that we are looking for. So that is a really important area for me. I've been hearing a lot from community members and residents about communications, and a lot of them mentioned the loss of our newspaper, which is still something that people are feeling. And so I appreciate the presentation that we got on communications. I would challenge us to go further. I don't think that what I have seen here, and maybe I'm wrong, hits the need that I think the community is really feeling around a lack of a central place to receive information. I know right now, people say they get their information from our website, but I think in many cases, that may be because we aren't doing as much engagement or giving them a reason to engage with us in some of the other areas like newsletter and social media. So I'd like to see a little bit more of a push there that really understands what the community need is. People would like to engage with us, but we need to give them a reason to. So those are the two areas that I really wanted to highlight. I'm looking forward to this as a budget, but I also appreciate the ability to reflect on just other programmatic changes that we might be able to make. Thank you.
Thanks. Other comments? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I think at the retreat, we as a group looked at the data, and then I appreciate this framing that we have tonight, which again, looks back at the data and digs deeper and looks at how we could adjust or pivot to meet the goals and the areas that the community said were most important in that, in those surveys and in what we're hearing from the community. So I think overall, this is a great use of data to do this update, and it is the first time that we've done a mid-biennium budget. So I appreciate that process and that transparency. I wanted to make a few specific comments on Metro Flex. It is an update, but it's something that we've been talking about for probably about 10 years, connecting these neighborhoods, Talis and Squawk, with the valley floor in a way that doesn't involve a single occupant vehicle trip with public transit. So it's, it's an update because we have come to a new step in the process where we can make this budget, take this step in the budget, but it's definitely not a new, something new on our radar. And I appreciate that we are going forward with this. This is something that has been on the community's mind for a long time, so it's a long time coming. In the retreat, one of the things that I spoke about and that I continue to think is really important is emergency planning and also communications to the community about emergency. I appreciated the information that was presented this evening. I think we have, we have to make sure that everybody is getting these updates one way or another, and so those, those numbers that were presented, it's good to have that baseline, but I would like to make sure that we have these alerts that are getting to everyone and also that everybody knows what to do when that alert comes up on their, on their device or when they hear from their neighbors about this alert. So I think that preparedness is really important. I, I have also served on the King Conservation District Advisory Board previously, and there is a FireWise-type program that they do to let residents know about what they can do on their properties. But I also know that not a lot of residents know about those programs, and so it's, it's important that we get the word out about those programs and that people, people do participate and know what they can do to prevent wildfire and what to do in case of emergencies. So I appreciate that information. We'll be looking forward to hearing how, how that proceeds with our programs and with our communications. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Any other councilmember comments? Looking around, no. Great. Well, thank you for that presentation. Do you have everything that you need, City Administrator? Oh, sorry? Nope? Okay, we're good. You have everything you need? Okay, that was great. Thank you all. Thank you for your thoughtful comments. There was no formal action tonight. We really were just looking for your direction, so thank you very much for that. We're going to move into our next item of business, which is committee and regional reports, and I'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Cascade Water Alliance will be holding a extended board meeting on Wednesday, the 26th, 3:30, I think, three or three, 3 o'clock it starts, and Councilmember Ray has graciously, graciously agreed to stand in for me. And Councilmember Ray has graciously, graciously agreed to stand in for me as I will be out of town, planned in advance of this extended meeting, long before the extended meeting was scheduled. So thank you, Councilmember Ray. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. On August 14th, I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership. From the general manager's report, Metro General Manager's report, ridership is now up to 260,000 riders per day. So slowly but surely, it is inching its way back to pre-pandemic levels. However, the new pattern shows that the bulk of commuting is occurring Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and Mondays and Fridays are virtual deserts as they are in downtown businesses as well. So, so we're still figuring out this new world and things are not settled yet. The presentation at ETP focused on bus service to the rural areas of King County and included a discussion of Metro Flex, which we'll be taking up ourselves on August, at the August 7th council meeting. But I did want to note that during the extended discussion of Metro Flex, three of our fellow Eastside cities said that they would like to be next in line for a Metro Flex route. So just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. On July 20th, the Salmon Recovery Council of our watershed called Wira Eight met, and the main item that we discussed was our draft 2024 budget and work plan. This covers all of the salmon recovery actions that will be taken over 2024, habitat restoration as well as education programming that is funded. And we will have another meeting in August for the Management Committee. This is a group that then advises the rest of the council on the budget, and I am a member of that committee. More salmon-related updates. This Wednesday, July 26th, there will be a meeting of the Kokoni Work Group, and I had previously reported to council about the Kokoni ILA, which is Inter-Local Agreement Management Committee, recommending a budget that has a increase to, to continue a captive breeding program for Kokoni. So we did have a quorum that voted in support of that, and we will be taking that, that information, or I will be, as chair of that group, I will be taking that information to the Kokoni Work Group. That's the group that will actually go forward and implement these actions for our Kokoni, which are a very special kind of salmon that specifically spend their entire lake within Lake Sammish. So I will report back after that meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee met on July 11th. We had a single agenda item, which was ID 1444, the Metro Flex On-Demand Program. I will wait until we meet on the 7th, when we're going to be considering that, to give you a little full briefing on that. And as Councilmember Joe mentioned, I will be attending the Cascade Water Alliance meeting on Wednesday. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee had an actual rare onsite meeting Wednesday, July 12th at 7:00 PM. We had three sort of roundtables where we compared notes on how our cities were doing certain things. Salary-setting processes for cities, which was certainly timely for us. Affordable Housing Committee Charter Review, what we're doing on affordable housing. Regional emergency management coordination, what topics would we find useful? And in all of these, I had gotten some input from the city that I shared as the pick rep. No, but no actions were taken out of that meeting. Council Services Safety, Services Safety and Parks Committee met on Tuesday, July 18th at 6:30 PM. We only had one item. It was a follow-up discussion regarding the broadband internet, and the committee said that we were fine moving away from a question of was there or was there not basic access? There is, to city efforts to help the residents be informed about subsidies and other programs that would be available to help them get better access. And we said that seemed like a great idea. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Deputy Council President Hall?
No report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Walsh?
Also no report this evening.
Oh, great. Moving on to the mayor's report, I do not have any particular items to bring tonight either. For good of the order, anybody have any items? I do have a few meeting dates. Does anybody have anything they want to share at good of the order? Okay, while you're thinking about it, Monday, August 7th, there is a city council meeting, and the anticipated agenda items include Metro Flex On-Demand Pilot Program, 2022 Year-End Overview, and 2023/24 Revenue Forecast, Wash Dot Property Transfer with respect to the Fish Passage Project. And then the second regular city council meeting in August is canceled to allow for a summer break. Council President, good of the order.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the city for, and particularly the Public Works Department, for a great summer employee recognition event. And I say particularly the Public Works Department because, man, they were out there at 4:30 AM setting everything up. That team did such good work, and it was lovely seeing everyone out there enjoying time on the lake, eating together. There were some really neat water balloons out there that were, that don't break apart, everything. It was a great event, and so I love the way that our city and our staff come together, but I also love the way that they support each other to create an event because that type of event doesn't just poof appear. It really takes work, and I just really appreciated seeing everybody out there.
Thanks. It was nice to have some council members there as well. That was really fun. Anything else for the good of the order? I am going to go into the next item, which is an executive session, but as I read my material, we will actually be taking a five-minute break at the beginning of the executive session. So allow us to set up the room, et cetera. So the next item on the council agenda this evening is an executive session, and the city council will now recess into executive session to discuss pending and potential litigation per R C W 42.30, .110 per N1 per NI, and the item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow an open session. Please note that executive sessions are closed to the public, and we will now recess into executive session at 8:57 PM. I asked the clerk to move the city council and any relevant staff into the separate session within this meeting, and anyone who's not part of the closed session can, will remain in the main meeting if you're joining us virtually. You're welcome to stay until the meeting's reconvened.